I will now call to order the Monday, April 8th, 2024, at 5:00 PM, Municipal Building 150 East Monroe Street in Whitfield. We do have a quorum. Please stand for the pledge allegiance by Councilwoman Holly Athens.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the agenda. Now we need a motion.
Motion, move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hear none. It's a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Gilman.
Gilman, uh.
Anderson, uh.
Taylor, uh.
Atkins, uh.
Johnson, uh.
Next on the agenda is a notice that at 6:00 PM, we can have a recess if necessary. Next is consent agenda, which, uh, which is the minutes from the last work session and the regular meeting of March 2010, 2024. I'll need a motion, except as is or somehow amended.
No.
Have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to make sure that it was corrected.
It was correct. Anything else?
I mean, thank you, Mayor, too.
Motion and second is in. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. That motion passes. Uh, next is public hearing to consider appropriations to the fiscal year 2023-24 budget in order to amend departmental budgets due to expenditures for sewer improvements. And before we open that up, we'll have some information by Assistant Town Manager.
Thank you for letting me present this item tonight. Um, essentially, we touched on this at the last meeting when we set the public hearing for tonight. Uh, the Public Utilities Department sent a request to town management that they would like to initiate the rebuild of the Booker Pump Station, the one that Brian just referenced earlier tonight. Um, if we ordered the pumps today, it would take five to eight months for them to get here, which is why we're asking for that early. We did not want to wait till July 1st to have to order those because that would kick us even further back into the year in terms of rebuilding that pump station. So in your packet, I provided information about the entire rebuild of pump station number six. This information was provided to us by Billy Anderson, and it did a very detailed breakdown of what it would take to rebuild that pump station. Um, and you'll notice on the very last page of that, um, again, in coordination with what Brian Freeman just presented, next year's CIP request would have $433, $400. And tonight, you will consider the appropriation of $46,600 as a down payment for the pumps and the electrical control that would also be needed to initiate the project. The second item that we are asking for an appropriation of tonight would be the temporary portable pump. Um, we have three pump stations that are what's called, that need a high-head pump, and the pump that we currently have does not, is not able to handle that capacity. So every, anytime we have an issue with those three pump stations, we have to rent a high-head pump. Sometimes it takes multiple days for that to get here, and so during that time period, we have to hire, uh, trucks to, um, transport, uh, the waste while we're waiting for the temporary pump to get here. Um, in addition to that, uh, it's the cost that Brian mentioned earlier. It's about $7,000 a month that we are paying in rental fees for that high-head pump, and it just makes more fiscal sense for us to own one, um, instead of paying for the rental fee. So tonight, if, after the public hearing, if you agree, uh, staff is requesting that you grant this appropriation for those two items. And if you have any questions, we are here to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions for, uh, Elaine before we open up this public hearing? We'll officially open up this public hearing to consider appropriations to the fiscal year 2023-24 budget in order to amend departmental budgets due to expenditures for sewer improvements. We do not have anybody that has signed in. Moment to, uh, speak to this. So we're going to just, we're going ahead and just close that public hearing. So next is consideration by town council to approve appropriations to the fiscal year 2023-24 budget in order to amend the departmental budgets due to the expenditures for sewer improvements. I will need a motion.
So move.
Motion. I need a second.
Second.
Two seconds. Any discussion?
We can go ahead and order those later.
They can order them tomorrow.
All right. Any other questions? Many of this will be a roll call vote. Councilwoman Johnson, please.
Johnson. Atkins, uh.
Taylor, uh.
Anderson, uh.
Gilman, uh.
I demand this, and that our motion passes. Next on the agenda is to consider the request of downtown Whitfield Corporation to provide traffic control on Thursday, July 4th, 2024, for the Fourth of July celebration and street festival. I believe, so if it is available, she has anything, if they have any questions. We'd like to have a consideration by town council to approve the request.
Please, then, you. Further.
None?
Yes.
Yes. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Motion and second. Is there any further discussion?
Just want to ask about the barriers. Just want to make sure they're, if they use the barriers, if they're going to be filled properly, what they were supposed to be used for.
Ms. Vankin, your packet, you will see a map of the proposed street closure, and we also have Charles here, answering questions about the street closure. I believe for this thing, because the closure is so large, it will be like central barriers and the fire department being able to, I mean, just go ahead.
Usually the barriers that you're talking about, um, are placed across Main Street, usually Street 63, since that's where most of the draft.
But my.
But I think our intent would be for them to be filled. They should be filled.
They should be.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Is there any opposed? That motion passes. Next is a consideration, the request of West Arts Council, LBD, for traffic control on Saturday, October 19th, 2024, for the arts at the Crossroads Apple Hatchet Fest. Again, I'm sure it's also will be available for any questions. Uh, but do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to consider the request of the Arts Council, uh, for traffic control on Saturday, October 19th, 2024, for the arts at the Crossroads Apple Hatchet Fest.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Hear none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. As well, any opposed? That motion passes. Next is consider the request of Whitfield, Whitland Chamber of Commerce for traffic control on Friday, May 3rd, 2024, for Community Connections Day Event. And we have someone present that can answer any questions, but I'll take a motion.
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Taylor, I do have a question on the form. It says like one to three, but then it says it starts at four. I just want to make.
The one to three, the difference that we're making, that will actually be covering the wall. And then the three to four, um, this year, we chose not to ask for a street festival, which will be using the same format as that, which is on the side of the building. Um, and then the primary festival, yeah, that evening, so it will be everyone in that general area, not the personal, but, um, the actual setup would be the three or four, and then the event sort of.
Okay. And, um, will there be alcohol for that?
We, um, will be allowing the government license, and the officer has already been.
Okay. Okay. That was going to be my question. I didn't see that on there, but I may have missed it.
I said no.
Okay.
It has been, uh, reflected in, there's been a question.
That was my question. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? None. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. That motion is passed. Uh, next is the discussion regarding ordinance number 1430, ordinance amending and reenacting ordinance number 1028, generally known as Personnel Rules, Regulations, and Policies of the Town of Whitfield, Virginia, so as to amend Section 6 benefits, subsection 6.4 Retirement Benefits. Not voting on this tonight. We are just getting some, um, information.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. OPEB or other post-employment benefits are defined as benefits other than pension distributions that employees may begin to receive from their employer once they retire. OPEB can include life insurance, health insurance, and deferred compensation. For Section 6 benefits, subsection 6.5, 6.4 Retirement Benefits of the Town's Personnel Ordinance, employees with 25 years of service to the town who are eligible to retire under the Virginia retirement system are also eligible to remain on the town's insurance plan, with the town contributing 50% of the monthly premium up to a limit of $300 for a period of no more than five years or until the employee becomes Medicare-eligible, whichever is first. Employees who receive the hazardous duty supplement are not eligible to receive this benefit. In 2013, this benefit began, and it has not been modified since, despite significant increases in employee health insurance premiums over that timeframe. It is my recommendation that the Personnel Ordinance be modified to remove the $300 limit for the monthly premium cost, as well as removing the restriction from active employees who also receive the hazardous duty retirement supplement, and that this item be placed on an upcoming town council agenda for consideration and vote by the council. You have attached, uh, in your packet, a copy of the, um, subject ordinance with strike throughs and highlighting to show the changes. There's some very, very slight changes there. Uh, we would strike through, uh, item five, which, uh, has the caveat, but in no case more than $300 per month. And then on the second sheet of that, under number seven, it says, effective July 1st, 2017, any personnel eligible for the hazardous duty supplement will not be eligible to receive the retiree insurance benefit. So again, not, not asking you all to take any action on that tonight, just asking you to think about it. Uh, I can bring it back, uh, from me if you'd like. If you would like, it could be referred to committee for review, consideration. But that's the recommendation. And I'll entertain any questions you may have about.
Oh, so can you bring that up?
I can bring it back in two weeks. Thank you. You both.
Mr. Freeman, has there any, has there been any other, um, discussion on years' part, or is five years just standard, or would the council consider, uh, for dedicated employees to go up in a couple of years versus just the five years?
Um, full council hasn't talked about it. Um, we did touch on this a little bit in Budget Finance, probably a month ago, probably haven't talked about it since. But, I mean, certainly if there's things you want us to look at, I would suggest we refer it to the committee and then bring it back if you want us to look at alternatives to what is presented here. Otherwise, I would, I would, if it comes from me, I would probably bring it back like we're showing it here, but if, if you'd like to get other council members to weigh in, I'd suggest we refer it to committee and, uh, hash it out a little bit more.
I'd love to, the council to consider, uh, new, uh, on the, on the, on the.
We can ask the committee to, to discuss that and then bring it back to us, because that's going to be discussed.
Exactly. What are you asking for, listen? Okay. If you go down through here and you look at the, like, uh, 300, uh, for the period and no more than five, I was wondering if the, um, if the committees could look at going higher than five years.
I don't see the reason for the committee to need. I mean, we're all here. We can have a discussion as to whether or not we want it to go from five to seven. We're all present. I think we can have an executive discussion about that. Can we not? Is that legal, Mr. Castle?
You can, you can choose to discuss it, or you can choose to refer it to committee. You don't want to, but if it is an agenda item, please stop.
I mean, everything else looks decent to me and grateful for that. I think, uh, the town does offer some great benefits, but I would like to see if the five years extend to maybe eight.
So my personal, uh, thought is I would like to see it go to a committee because I would like to see some numbers associated with what y'all are talking about, as it is, uh, and talking about with people.
Well, and, and I really have, yeah, just read. Mr. Freeman, I had some discussion on, on, he just, he and I.
Why don't we all leave about it after we run some numbers on it in our next work session?
It's whatever you all want to do. I mean, I, my suggestion to go to committee is just, because it's.
It's fine.
It, yeah, I mean, it's fine. It's good governance, but it's okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson. I was going to suggest that the budget finance look at it and come back with a recommendation.
I don't see why we all can't.
Yeah. And I think Mr. Castle said before, if we all wanted to be on to the discussion, could we, could we do that, Mr. Castle?
You can set it for a work session at full council, or you can refer it to committee. Either, either way, we'll be up for it, if you choose to.
I'd like to see the whole council, since it's going to be a council decision, we would all be up, up to speed on that. I'd at least like to see the whole council look at it.
So can we do that in a mixed, in a mixed, um, meeting with the, talking about the finances and the stuff that, or is that, I mean?
It's, it's fine. I mean, it'll be a busy meeting, but we wouldn't do it.
Have any work sessions planned, so maybe a regular agenda item?
It could also be a regular agenda item, also for all of you to discuss it. I didn't say that, but Ms. Holton's exactly right.
I think that would give us time to get some information, and we just, let's follow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next on the agenda is Citizens Period. And again, we do not have anybody signed, signed in to.
Next, I think we did, I'm sorry. Sorry. I was, I was out of line.
All right. Next on the agenda is, uh, new business, and, uh, Town Manager Freeman, please.
Uh, no new business, uh, just, just a quick report that, from Mr. Stevens today, that the phase one of the transition to, uh, the admin system went very well. Uh, phase two of that system, which includes the taxation, the cash register system, which is the daily in and out of cash, and the water, uh, sewer utilities, uh, will can transfer around May 15th. So so far, so good. Uh, first payroll will run in a couple of days, so that's our next big step.
Next on the agenda is, uh, here from the Budget and Finance Committee Report.
The Budget and Finance Committee Report, April 8th, 2024. Capital and one-time expense for fiscal year 2425. Each year, the town of Whitfield must evaluate and plan for its capital needs, such as major expenditures are scheduled within the context of the overall budget. The town considers new one-time projects costing more than $5,000 with a useful life of more than five years as capital and one-time expenditures. After careful consideration, it is recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee that the town of Whitfield include capital and one-time expenditures in the amount of $786,000 in the general fund and. Okay. And $330,000 in the waters fund and $513,400 in the sewer fund for the fiscal year 2024-25. Would you like for me to read the general fund capital one-time expenditures, line by line?
I think that's necessary.
Okay. All right. Part two, the proposed master fee schedule changes for the fiscal year 2425. Each year, part of the budget process includes the Whitfield Town Council reviewing the town of Whitfield master fee schedule and considering changes for the next fiscal year. Proposed changes to the fee schedule originate with town department head, department heads submitting their proposed changes to town management and the Budget and Finance Committee for review and discussion. The committee considers the proposed changes and makes any edits as needed. The proposed master fee schedule for fiscal year 2024-25 has been reviewed by the Budget and Finance Committee and is being presented to the Whitfield Town Council for recommendation to approve the master fee schedule as presented in the council packet. If approved, the proposed changes will go into effect July 1st, 2024, which is when the new master fee schedule will be posted on the town's website and reflected in department operations. This year, very few changes have been proposed for the master fee schedule. The proposed changes are highlighted in the attached master fee schedule. The proposed changes include the following. Increase in the base rate of water users by $1. Increase in the water rate for each category of water user. Increase in the base rate for sewer water users by $1. Increase in the sewer rate for each category of sewer user. Note, the proposed increase in water and sewer rates combined will equate to $6.31 increase in the household water and sewer utility bill for those residential users at 5,000 gallons per month. Note, the rate increase will be used by the town to help balance the water and sewer enterprise funds, where low reserves on high operational capital costs will require a rate increase this year to continue to provide high-quality utility services to the citizens of the community. Rewarded building department fees for plan review, modify the EMS fire fees to reflect the recent town code changes and to allow reimbursement for hazardous material incidents. The Budget and Finance Committee would recommend that the town council consider this request at the April 22nd, 24 meeting. A public hearing is required prior to the town council's consideration on the matter. Therefore, later in the meeting, the council will be asked to schedule a public hearing to consider the proposed master fee schedule at the April 22nd, 2024 Whitfield Town Council meeting. I would like to, um, before we proceed, I can't make a recommendation on this. I can't sign off on this because I was asked for information that I did not receive, and until I see that information, I am not signing off on this. I asked for it in a text message. It was not sent. It was sent to an email that is not working. If anybody would like to take a look at it, you can. But I, I won't be signing off on this because I asked for specific information, and it was not given to me.
And so normally, we would, uh, see with the idea that we have two people already on board with this. I mean, there's two separate parts to here. So the first part, the Budget and Finance Committee Report, is a recommendation to town council to consider capital and one-time expenditures to the general fund and the water and sewer fund for fiscal year 2024-25. I need a motion. What are you making a motion for? Again?
Item one.
Uh, the first part of, of this.
Item one.
A one.
This is for our motion in a second.
Water and sewer fund.
No, this would actually be item number one, which is consider capital and one-time expenditures for the general fund. It's basically the stuff in the presentation.
Okay. And on that, the first part of that, does that not include the, um, recreation for the T-Ball Mounds? Is that, is that what's included in that?
Yes.
It is? I didn't receive the estimates that I requested, so I cannot make the recommendation.
Ms. Johnson.
We had somebody make a recommendation, so. I'm sorry? We did have a recommendation.
So.
I'm happy to retrieve that if you all want to recess. I'm happy to go print out a copy of the books for the, the pitching mound and provide it to the entire council, if you'd like.
Let me just first apologize for you not getting the information. I think, uh, I think a reasonable attempt to get it to you was made. Um, and, you know, we're not always, I know that you expressed that you were having trouble with email, but I think a reasonable attempt to get it to you was made. And so what we had suggested when we left that meeting was, is that we would include it at the not to exceed $7,500, and then we would base what goes in the first reading on actual quotations, which I think I heard from Mr. Scher today, came in under $7,500. So we did not go above the amount. Um, and I do think that a, that in good, good faith, attempt to get the information to you was made, and I understand that there was a technological problem, and apologies. But the, the amount that we presented two weeks ago, plus again today, plus for multiple weeks to Budget and Finance Committee, was $7,500, and I think I heard today that it would come in under that amount.
Once again, the agreement was to proceed, want to receive the information. I asked for the information to be sent in a text message. That was the agreement. It was sent in an email, so I don't have that.
What if, if Ms. Holton gives it to us now? Would you consider it, Ms. Johnson?
Sure. I'll, I'll take a look at it. But I don't appreciate, I asked for it one way. I didn't demand it. I asked it only to be sent in a text message because I knew the situation. So council wants to take a recess?
Let's take a five-minute recess and you'll retrieve that information, please.
Anybody got a statement, please?
Here. Did you give me that?
I did.
Okay. Taylor, here's your.
What's here?
I apologize. There you go, Sharon.
Thank you so much.
But we're ready to go back into session. I don't need a few more minutes. We are now out of session, and we are at the point where we have a recommendation to town council to consider capital and one-time expenditures to the general funds and the Water and Sewer Fund of fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We're throwing the Budget and Finance Committee.
Mayor Taylor, I passed out a copy of the three quotes for the pitching mounds, which is the information that was not shared with Ms. Johnson. I do apologize for that. On behalf of myself and Mr. Freeman, we would appreciate a consideration on this matter just so that we could get to the next part in the budget process, which is to go to the first reading of the budget. And knowing what is in the capital request, what you all have agreed to for the capital request is a critical part of us finalizing the budget. So I respectfully ask that you consider the matter tonight if you're able to do so.
Questions, comments, concerns, or this information that's upon us? What was your next question? Oh, I just wanted to know if anybody was. Yes. Okay. So since this recommendation came from a committee, it needs no second. We have a motion. We already have a second. Can we have any discussion?
I did, Mayor Taylor. I do have a little bit of a hard, difficult swallow when going and looking at this, you know, line by line. I'm just scared to go ahead and jump on board with this because there may have been a couple grand or two that could have been looked into. The flooring, I am a little cautious about because of the fact if it does have, you know, some things in it that may not pass, it could probably exceed over twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm not saying the floors don't need to be replaced. They're well past due as well. But that, I'm just sort of scared to jump on board with a few things. So I'm sorry.
That's all right. We're taking it. Any other discussion? So again, coming from a committee, needs no second.
Mayor Taylor, is there any way that, excuse me, is there any way that things could be looked into without just going ahead and passing this as a lump sum?
And I think we need to, since we have the recommendation from the committee, and that's why we have these committees, we have some questions, and we're all not going to agree on every.
Oh, wait a minute. I didn't say anything about trust.
Oh, okay.
I'm just saying, I just think if we're going to have a deficit in the budget and every avenue was not looked into, I just can't pass it. I'm sorry.
Well, I think Mr. Freeman agreed to do some research on, if you're talking about asbestos, I'm sure he's, will do that for us. But if we go ahead and say along twenty-five thousand and it's say seventy-five, you know, we've just, who's going to pay the fifty?
So this is not passing a budget. You will not pass a budget for seven more weeks. You will have, but please let me finish. So you will have three more looks at the total budget. The only one, frankly, that actually really counts is number three. So we've got seven weeks to modify these, but I, what we're asking is, what is the council's pleasure relative to capital and one-time expenditures? What do you want to see on budget reading number one, which is in two weeks? That's all we're asking you to do is tell us whether or not you want to see these as a group, simple majority, do you want to see these things or not? I mean, that's it. And then you will have seven weeks from tonight is when you will have your third and final reading of the budget. Does that make sense to everybody? It's all we're asking you to do is say yes, the council, the body, is wants staff to include these expenditures.
So if we say yes tonight, then that means yes, we agree with all these, correct?
It means you want me to put them in your budget for the first reading.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Gilman?
Gilman, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, no.
Atkins, aye.
Motion passes. Next was a recommendation to the town council to schedule a public hearing for April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, for town council meeting to consider a revised master fee schedule that includes water and sewer rate increases. This requires a motion and a vote. We have a motion. Public hearing, we're setting up a public hearing.
Don't move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, seconds. Any discussion? Right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Might as well. Any oppose? We'll get that set up. Next on the agenda is upcoming meetings. We're going to turn to the town clerk, Cherry Corbin.
Thank you so much. We have several upcoming meetings. First is the Withfield Recreation Committee will meet on Wednesday, April tenth, at five-thirty at the Withfield Community Center. The Withfield Planning Commission meeting scheduled for Thursday, April eleventh, has been canceled. The Homestead Museum Advisory Board will meet on Friday, April twelfth, at ten a.m. at the Jackson House. Downtown Withfield Incorporated Board will meet on Monday, April fifteenth, at five-thirty at the Downtown Withfield Office. The Withfield Economic Development Authority will meet on Wednesday, April seventeenth, at nine a.m. here in the council chambers. The Withfield Redevelopment Housing Authority will meet on Wednesday, April seventeenth, at twelve p.m. at the Housing Authority Office. The New River Regional Water Authority will meet on Thursday, April eighteenth, at ten a.m. at the Water Plant in Austenville. And the next regular scheduled meeting of the Withfield Town Council will be held on Monday, April twenty-second, at five p.m. here in the council chambers.
That's all. All right, thank you. Other business, we have a presentation regarding congressionally-directed spending funding, and this will be presented by Assistant Town Manager.
All right. Thank you for letting me present this item on the agenda. Essentially, I provided some information in your packet about congressionally-directed spending requests. Essentially, over the last three years, congressional members have selected local government projects for funding allocations as part of the congressional-directed spending appropriations process. And this is a funding source which has the capacity to fund one-time capital expenses. In your packets, listed as attachment A, I provided some examples of other projects that were funded in previous years. Essentially, I became aware of this funding source about three weeks ago and started tracking it on that website for this funding source. I think it's typical, they typically announce the deadlines about a week before it's due, when the date is, and that's what I experienced with this funding source. So I went ahead and applied for it on Friday. However, if the council does not want to do this, I will withdraw it tomorrow because we do need a resolution from you, which is under consideration tonight. And in your packet, you will see a resolution, and so tonight you can decide whether you want to do this or not. The application costs no money to apply, so I think it's a good deal for us to go ahead and apply. If we are awarded, the amount of the dollar value of the request is for two clarifiers at our wastewater treatment plant. The total cost has been estimated at two million, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And if we are awarded, we would be responsible for twenty percent of that cost, which is four hundred and seventy-one, four hundred dollars. What I would recommend is that we not appropriate those funds in the budget because essentially it's probably going to be at least nine months before we are notified whether or not we are awarded, and it's a long shot. I'm not going to lie to you about that. There's a lot of people applying for these funds. However, if we are lucky and we do get awarded, we can appropriate the twenty percent match at that time. As many of you know, there is a great amount of need at our wastewater treatment plant, the old clarifiers, I was just there today. I think I am recommending that you move forward with this grant application, and if you have any questions, please let me know. I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
And Ms. Halton, how much was the total?
For two clarifiers, the total project cost is estimated at two million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Excuse me, and you have to pay some back, you said, please?
It will be a twenty percent match, which is four hundred and seventy-one, four hundred dollars. Sure.
That the town will pay back? And where would that come from, Mr. Freeman?
More than likely, Ms. Atkins, we would have to borrow that. But for something that's, you know, has a twenty to thirty-year lifespan, that's a pretty reasonable loan request.
Okay, so we would have to borrow the?
Four seventy-one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Ms. Hilton? Sorry. Appreciate you jumping in there and was trying on our behalf in those areas, and you found that we really need some updating for sure. I appreciate that. Any other comments?
I did have a question, and I need to ask, but the four hundred some, we'll borrow that, correct? We just approved over seven hundred and some thousand.
So I think what, the only rational way to look at this project is if someone's going to give you eighty percent, if you have a known need of two-point-three million dollars and someone is willing to give you eighty percent of that, I would.
Oh, no, no, I know. I get that big future, but that was just my question, is we just approved that and then we're going to borrow? I just had that question. Okay.
Yeah, totally different situation from the General Fund versus the Wastewater Fund. Wastewater Fund right now has about two hundred thousand dollars in it, plus the four ninety-one that was borrowed last year. So the Wastewater Fund is limping, to say the least. You're welcome.
Any other questions or concerns? So ask for consideration by town council to approve a resolution authorizing town staff to apply for congressionally-directed spending funds. Want to need a motion?
Don't move.
A motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second. This is a roll call vote. We'll start with Councilwoman Johnson.
Johnson, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Taylor, aye.
Atkins, aye.
Gilman, aye.
Motion passing. Next on the agenda is to consider a schedule on a public hearing for April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, town council meeting to consider meals and lodging tax rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and twenty-five.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So, you know, going into this budget year, we knew that we would probably project another shortfall. That appears to be the case again, based on, you know, just how things went last year and sort of the temperature of the council, you know. It looks like we're just going to have to use whatever tools we have to raise additional revenues. And I think right now that's, meals and lodging tax makes the most sense for the town and this council and the citizens at this time. So we will need to schedule that public hearing so that we can get that process rolling in two weeks. Now, we will have to, I do believe, Mr. Castle, I'll put you on the spot here, but do we have to publish the, basically a not to exceed rate? We can publish a rate, an anticipated rate increase that cannot be, you cannot go over it in the meeting, but if you chose to, you could go down. The rates that we have been talking about are ten cents on lodging, going from eight to ten, ten percent, and then going from eight to nine on meals. The aggregate.
Ten cents?
Ten cents on lodging.
Or two cents.
Going from eight to ten.
To ten.
That's what I meant, is ten, just going to ten on lodging, not a ten-cent increase.
I was a little confused.
I apologize.
Yeah.
Going from eight to, let me restate that. What has been under discussion thus far is an increase from eight cents to ten cents on the lodging tax and an increase from eight cents to nine cents on the meals tax.
And you will need to publish a not to exceed rate. Take comments on your public.
Any questions?
Mr. Freeman, has there been any discussion on not to raise meals at this time, but just lodging?
We talked about a lot of different things. You know, they're both sitting there at eight cents right now. Meals, one penny of meals, net's about five hundred thousand dollars, but it takes two pennies of lodging to do the same. I know that there's a lot of discussion about how this impacts the citizens, but the math really doesn't, doesn't, math tells a different story. If you spend a thousand dollars eating out today and we pass a one penny increase, you'll spend a thousand, ten dollars next year. If you spend two thousand dollars, you know, it's a penny per dollar. So it's not a, it's a penny, a ten-dollar meal will cost you ten dollars and ten cents more. It's pretty minimal. It's just the aggregate of all those pennies, and you're welcome.
Questions? Any other questions or comments?
I would like the council to consider just leaving the meals, not doing it this time, and we could revisit it in six months and do lodging.
So we have a motion for a recommendation.
No.
Are you that made a motion? Yeah, and I took that back, said, oh, I just took it back. Said I made a motion, but I said no, a recommendation. We just, we have time to think about it, you know, with whatever council's wishes are, but we need to consider, I tell council, to schedule the public hearing, and the numbers we were talking about is what we need to publish. That's not adopting it tonight, correct?
You are not adopting it tonight. You are publishing to get comments from the citizens about those proposed rates, whatever rates you should, so to choose.
And then after that public hearing, depends on what we're hearing, then we can make our decisive decision at that point.
You can, but you will not be able at that time to go higher than the rates that you published. And if you don't publish as to one tax, if you only publish as to one tax, you won't be able to address one tax. That's entirely up to you, which is. That's entirely up to you, which is.
So for clarification, if we advertise an increase in both the lodging and the meals, and the council just decides to do lodging, are okay with our advertising?
Yes, because you gave the, you gave the public knowledge and allowed them the chance to comment on the possibility of raising those taxes. You do not have to do it. But if you do not have a public hearing regarding potentially raising those taxes, your hands are tied until you have a public hearing addressing the potential to raise whatever tax that you're considering.
Any, any other questions, concerns? Second, what, what was your question or concern?
My, my question is to drop the meals, leave the meals off, and we can come back and revisit that in like six months, since we just raised meals, didn't know, and then we could leave the lodging at two.
I think what we're just hearing from people is though, is we ought to go to the next step. You still have an opportunity at that next step, once you hear from the public, to do that, to ask council to do that. Sense?
I didn't, I'm sorry, Mr. Miss, somebody's, sorry.
Well, I'm not willing to tie our hands, so let's, for advertising purposes, let's do meals 1% more and lodging 2% more, just, just for advertising purposes. I'm not, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but let's get it to the public and let, let them help us. Give their view, what they like, and then we get the vote on it.
So is that, is that motion?
Yes, ma'am. I was just wondering, in between, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, whoever wants a second. I'll ask, I, I was going to ask in between, go ahead.
There's a motion on the table, and I guess we'll need a second?
And then we can discuss further. Second.
We have the motion, a second. Now, any further discussion?
Yes. Going back, and I may have, I may have not understood or heard, but on, when there was talk of discussion, was there anybody else, after I had made that suggestion, bring up anything else besides Mr. Castle? I'm sorry.
I don't think she was.
No, they didn't bring anything. Mayor Taylor just said that, you know, we would need that to go to the next step, to hear from the public.
I was saying, and she said from what we're hearing, and I didn't hear anybody else make any kind of suggestions, I just wondered who we were referring to.
I think that there was a, there was a broader discussion, a clarification, that basically you can advertise it and then go backwards, you can advertise it.
No, I, I fully get that, but I was, I mean, I do get that, and I was here, but I've just been, Mayor Taylor said, the other discuss, I just wasn't for sure, because I didn't hear, I'm sorry. So, anyway, go ahead.
So, we had motion, we have a second, but is there any further discussion? Again, we're just in consideration for town council to schedule a public hearing. I don't hear anything else, so not a roll call vote, so all in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? So we will schedule a public hearing. Next on the agenda is council member time. So, Mr. Gilman?
I have nothing at this time.
Next, mayor?
Nothing at this time.
I don't have anything either.
Ms. Atkins? I'm going to look at my manager quickly. Ms. Kim, sorry, Councilwoman Johnson.
Johnson, if you're ready.
Um, the gentleman with Mr. Kirby from the Paperclip came and voiced his concerns about the traffic on Main Street, how people are not waiting to go when a vehicle is making a turn. He came in, he expressed his concerns. Has anyone checked into that possible traffic hazard that was presented to us?
I do, so, so I think, and I may have that in email form, I thought Mr. Lieutenant Bard had analyzed that. So what gets tricky about that is when you get to the intersection, there's no, there's no striping or anything that limits where people can go. So what happens is if people are eastbound, meaning they're headed towards a tractor supply, and they want to make a left turn on Tazewell, they get into the intersection with the left turn signal, but they're waiting on the traffic that's still coming through. And so what people do is go around the right side of it. I think what Lieutenant Bard could relay to us was that that is a permissible maneuver, but it is, the code requires people to do that. They cannot make a, it's discretionary of the officer because they could deem that to be a dangerous maneuver, but it's not strictly prohibited to do it. Does that make sense? The maneuver itself is not strictly prohibited, but if an officer observes it and it's done in such a way that it's a dangerous maneuver, I do believe could be cited for it. But the maneuver itself is not strictly prohibited to go around a car that is making, waiting to make a turn, as long as they do it within the roadway.
Can you please reach out to him?
Let me see if I can, if he, I, I think he wrote that to us, but I'll go back and, yeah.
Can you please reach out to?
Mr. Kirby.
Mr. Kirby of Paperclip? And let him know what your findings are? I don't want to just leave him hanging out there without a response.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's, I just need to know when Mr. Woods is going to do his traffic calming presentation, when is it going to be put on the agenda?
I think we were looking at April, Elaine, do you know?
Okay.
Will the constituents on Mountain View Drive be contacted so they can attend the meeting?
The ones that voice concerns?
The ones that voice concerns, and if there are others that would like to attend, they should be afforded the opportunity as well.
I think everybody has an opportunity to.
So do you, do you all want us to directly solicit their participation?
To reach out to them, please, if you can advertise it on the radio, but they need to know that we are going to have a presentation in regards to their concerns.
So, sir, when, when we send it out, you send it out to the press?
We can send it to the radio, put it on the website. Do you like avenues like that? That's all I have.
Okay, I do have, I did have a note on my, actually, I'm here. I just want to make sure all the departments have, had a chance to put in for capital one-time expenditures.
They, they did indeed.
Okay, I just want to make sure. And then also, can we look at a, or sorry, can we see if there's a crosswalk that possibly there at, coming out of the college, going over to Hardy's, somewhere in that street stretch? I'm not sure, maybe at the gas station or wherever someone thinks is best.
I think, am I not, am I mistaken that this is already on the way and approved by VDOT?
That is correct.
And Mr. Woods presented on that already, I believe. But we can.
We applied for highway safety improvement funding and we were selected for that. We're still waiting.
It's 100% VDOT funded.
Okay, but can something be done sort of temporarily, maybe just like some signs down there, crosswalk in, or, or something, I mean, can, non-stop sign?
Let me, uh.
Something legal.
Let us, let us, between now and the next meeting, just get you an update on that timeline before we make any kind of moves there. I mean, if they're going to bear all the costs and get it done, I think it makes sense for us to do that, allow them to.
Right.
Mr. Wilson, any questions?
Well, I just mean, I mean, something even just temporarily to give guidance, you know, sometimes you see those little green men, you know, out there holding a flag, I mean, I wouldn't want to see that per se, but I have seen a couple people trying to get across the street and there's really nothing, and I understand, you know, VDOT, yes, but just, it, it could be looked into, so, thank you.
That's sort of like the Heritage Walk that we, again, waiting, anxiously waiting for it to happen, but other than the little sign right there, that's most not there anymore. I don't know if it interferes with what VDOT thinks if we start doing stuff, so that would be helpful to know.
It's just a suggestion.
Sure.
In the windows, I appreciate you giving me an update on the windows, so.
Anything else I need to come to or counsel incident? All right, we are good. Thank you, all.